So we're going to convene the council's committee of the whole meeting for this evening, October 28th. And I would like to remind anyone who would like to speak to the committee of the whole, please fill out a yellow card or slip and bring it forward. You'll get a chance to do a discussion at public comment early on in the meeting. We have an amended agenda tonight. So I'm going to call the meeting to order, and with the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
Okay, thank you. First, we ask, are there additions to the agenda? And we do have an amended agenda. There are two ordinances on the, in the body of the agenda tonight, plus a discussion. All right.
Would you say that the addition is?
Well, there had been a published agenda with only one liquor license on it, and I think the amended agenda includes two liquor license ordinances, if I'm correct. But the, I think that it, so it's listed as an amended agenda. All right. Let's start then also with a staff report. Is there anybody on staff who wishes to report at this time? Okay, I don't see any. Approval of the minutes of our previous meeting of October 14th, 2013.
Oh, okay.
So Carol Ammons made the motion. Is it seconded? Charlie Smythe? Were there corrections or additions to that, adjustments to that agenda, to the minutes of those meetings? All right, seeing none, those in favor of approving, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, those minutes are approved. Okay, now we're going to go to public input. We have four or five people who wish to speak, and also we've received various emails, which we can also add to the public record. I'll start first with the people who are present. And we'll start with, okay, the Reverend Dr. Underwood, and also Bishop King Underwood from the community. They do not choose to address the committee, but they ask that their position be entered into the record, that they are still concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. So thank you very much for that concern. That's in the public record. All right. Let's start then with the next public input from Kane Kaiser. Would you like to come forward, please, Kane? You've got five minutes to make a presentation, and you indicate that you are going to speak in support of digital billboards.
Correct.
So let us know your address and your name, just for the record.
My name is Kane Kaiser. I'm the real estate manager at Adams Outdoor Advertising in Champaign. We're located at 1711 Dobbins Drive. I am here to restate our company's wish to convert a minimal number of existing signed faces to digital displays, and I'm here again to ask you all to vote in favor of, to pass the ordinance on, or pass, to direct the planning staff to work on the project. Few weeks ago, I did a PowerPoint presentation. I've updated a chart and added a couple photos, which I know some of you have requested to see. So I'd like to go through that. The first slide, like last time, shows the six current digital displays that we have in Champaign. The top photo, that's the biggest, is the most recent installation over by Friday's off of Market View in Neal Street. This is the chart I redid. The Champaign Police Department helped me out by looking up accident reports at both these intersections in Neal Street and St. Mary's Road, and the University Avenue and Wright's intersections. Previously, it was a little bit hard to read. This one, kind of, you get the point a little bit easier. And I just wanted to point out that, you know, there seems to be no correlation in the installation of a digital billboard and increase in traffic accidents. This photo collage shows a standard bulletin, which is on the left-hand side, and on the right-hand side, we have a 10-by-30 bulletin digital display. Just wanted to point out that the footprint of the sign has not changed, only the delivery Here's a photo of an intersection that we've all talked about in our meetings together. It's one of the more sensitive areas that we found out through our discussions, and we've had a couple, we've had a mock-up done for you that shows, you know, one of several possible configurations that we've talked about at this intersection. The current photo that I'm showing shows a 10-by-30 digital display with the rest of the billboards gone.
Double-sided sign?
Yes, yes, that would be a double-sided sign. Initially, we wouldn't be wanting to give, put that much inventory of digital in Urbana. We want to kind of feel out and see what the demand is, but right now, the backside would be a standard static display. And then, once again, I want to show you the video comparing on-premise digital and off-premise digital, which would be billboards. And these digital, these digital on-premise signs are currently installed in Urbana.
They're not, that's right.
Thank you very much for your time tonight, and I'm here to answer any questions any of you may have.
Okay. Let's see, we'll have some questions. Bill Brown?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I was looking at your website, and I found your content, or, let's see, I think you had design guidelines and Dectronics, the manufacturer of your billboard, had some content guidelines.
Mm-hmm.
And they specifically said, "With LED technology, the use of emitted light, white or very light colors may repel the eye, not desired response in advertising. A grave concern in most regulatory environments is offensive use of light or white content." And goes on, explains why, and gives some recommendations about using black backgrounds instead of white.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's actually one of the most distracting things, is at night, when something changes real, it's pretty bright with the white background, and it changes pretty suddenly from light to black or dark or some other color.
Mm-hmm.
And that's one of the complaints I've heard, is that people, that's when they really notice, you know, is that change period at night. So I was wondering what efforts, I know, you know, you're in business and you have to do what your customer wants most of the time. I wonder what kind of efforts you take to actually enforce that, and if there's more you could do, or if we end up passing something, if there's something we could do in an ordinance to specify that a certain percent had to be below a certain value, or something like that?
Right. We never tell a client that they can't do something, but we do have an in-house creative department that is free of charge to any client that comes in, and we do talk to them about the use of colors and how that would impact their message. And from what I'm, from what I'm aware of, is that we do discourage the use of too much white on a billboard.
And just to follow up, I was also wondering, I noticed you had some ad council billboards up on Broadway. I wonder if there's some, I know, like, in radio, there's a certain percent that you're supposed to do for public service. Is there anything like that in outdoor advertising?
Not here locally. I've heard of other ordinances having that, but we do work, we will work with Urbana, we work with Champaign, and we work with many other local nonprofits to give them free advertising. You know, so there is a national ad council out there, but that's, you know, when we don't have enough of the local nonprofits coming to us.
So they actually pay for those?
They would pay for the materials, but they get the space for free.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Diane Marlin? Have a question?
Yes, I had a question. Champaign, when they negotiated their agreement with you, they had a two-for-one swap. They wanted, the goal was to get the billboards out of the downtown, so they, I believe, for every digital billboard you placed somewhere else, you were to get rid of two faces downtown? Is that how that worked?
Correct.
And how many have been removed from their downtown?
Well, with the six digital displays, that would be 12 faces total. So that downtown overlay district where we have to pull the faces from encompasses Green Street and, you know, most of the, and all the downtown areas.
Okay. And then, how many locations are you considering in Urbana?
At this moment, three.
Have you identified those yet?
Yes, we have. At least, we need to work with the property owners as well, so these are, what we would view as what we would want in a perfect world would be the corner of University and Lincoln Avenue, 102 West University Avenue, which is at the Reds Muffler Shop. That would be the east face. And 703 North Cunningham, that would be on the west side of the road, and that would be the south face on that one.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yes, Carol Ammons?
Just wanted to ask a question, just for process sake. We have the item on here as item six, and we're still in public participation. Do we have others for public participation section?
Just asking questions.
I know, but it's going to come back on the agenda. It is on the agenda and in public participation. I'm wondering if others are waiting for their five minutes, and then we'll have this on the agenda, item six.
Yes, we, yes, we'll get to it in order. And some people have asked that they speak before.
Before he does his, yeah.
Well, this is Mr. Bullard's opportunity to speak now. Are you talking about the conversation we're having right now?
Yes, because, uh-huh, because we're in public participation on the agenda, but then we have an item six that says discussion of digital billboards. So I'm just wondering if we could call him back. Could we call him back at that point?
Imagine if we have questions for him?
Okay.
All right. Other questions now?
Well, Eric? As long as we can call him back, I'd be glad to defer my question until that time. I do have a question, but I can defer it if that's, as long as we're sure we're going to do that.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. Okay, all right. Charlie Smythe?
Kane, if you would, I remember there was a sign at the old Jerry's IGA on Kirby, and it's been removed. Why was it removed?
It was removed because the sales numbers didn't justify that location. We moved it to a higher traffic location on Neal Street.
Okay, all right. No other questions then?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right. Next, Clark Bullard would like to speak before, at this time?
I can wait for the agenda.
Okay, all right. Carolyn Baxley would like to speak now.
Hi, Carolyn Baxley, 510 West Main, Urbana. I first wanted to say that I spent a lot of time in Jackson, Mississippi, before I came up here, and I don't know if you've ever been there, but Interstate 55 is absolutely lined with billboards from the city limits all the way on the north through the exit of the city limits on the south. So I was very adamantly opposed to billboards in those days, and I'm not a fan of them now, but I will say that Adams is an extremely good public citizen. I've been involved with two nonprofits, that they have been very generous in allowing to have free space when it was available for the cost of producing the billboards. So my opposition to the electronic billboards has nothing to do with Adams, because I think they're a responsible company, and their billboards look far and away better than the ones in Jackson. So, but I did want to say that my husband and I do not think that electronic billboards are appropriate for Urbana. We are Tree City USA. We are a small community that prides itself on the way our downtown looks in particular, and I just don't think that from an aesthetic standpoint, that they belong here. We're not Champaign, and we're not Las Vegas, and I don't think that changing electronic billboards will add anything to our current offerings for businesses to be able to advertise. And I would caution you to, you know, at least consider this very carefully. I did do some research on the safety of electronic billboards, and the jury is still out there. There are conflicting studies that say they distract drivers. There are others that say they don't. So that's a very difficult, you know, argument to make at this point. I think that there are not enough, there's not enough information on how distracting they are, and I think it also depends totally on how they're set up, and how often they change, and whether they have flashing, you know, displays or what. But I do think that it merits further study before we just plunge in and, you know, join the group in allowing them here. So I guess that's my point, is just urge caution, and I don't think that aesthetically they belong in Urbana.
Okay, other questions? Yes, Eric Jacobson?
So Carolyn, I'd like to, especially since you're my constituent, and I don't think we've communicated about this particular issue, but I have sort of a tentative position. If I'd like to run it by you and see if you approve, or might be receptive. And my position is that I would favor permitting them, provided the displays are static, they're no larger than current conventional billboards, the total number of billboards in the city must decrease, all the current ordinances pertaining to billboard placement must still persist, and some fraction of billboard time must be given to public service announcements with content that would be forwarded through the city. So I guess there's a question as to how many of these are, you know, can be locked up in terms of either agreement or ordinance, and I'm sure we're going to have to get, you know, opinion, updated legal opinion from council on that. But, and I'm going to listen to everything. This isn't a position set in stone, but do you feel that if there is, you know, appropriate regulation along these and other lines, that it might be something we should consider?
Well, I mean, that's a difficult question, because, like I said, my argument is purely aesthetic, I think, because there is no information that would really substantiate an argument on the basis of safety at this point. But I just personally do not think they belong here. I don't like the ones in Champaign. I don't like the ones in other towns. I think they are distracting, whether there is evidence of safety issues or not. I think that they're gaudy. They're, you know, they have light behind them. They're certainly, I would think, distracting at night, when a lot of, particularly elderly drivers, and I'm moving it rapidly into that category, have difficulty sometimes with lights at night. And, you know, I think that that can be a factor. So certainly, I think that if we could work out some compromise where the number of billboards in general is reduced, that that might be a good thing. But as I drove over here, I passed the corner of Cunningham and Main, and there's that giant billboard there, and I kept thinking, okay, now what if this were an electronic billboard? It's huge, and, you know, granted, maybe the ones you're considering are going to be on a smaller scale. If you decide to do this, and if you do amend the ordinance to permit them, I would urge you to reduce the scale, not the size of current billboards, but much smaller in scale. And at least that would be something, because some of the ones in town now are quite large and very ugly.
Okay, other questions? Thanks, Carol.
Thank you.
All right. We have two other people who are going to wait until the topic comes up. Some of us have received emails, well, probably a lot of us have received emails. I have a couple here that I guess I could add to the context. Mike Lehman, who is, lives on East Green Street in Urbana, emailed me, and he said that "I think the proposal to allow digital billboards is problematic. Even though limited to changing every 10 seconds, I see no benefit to the public from this. Only a new way to visually pollute public space by permitting a display of multiple messages to appear at sites that would otherwise not permit multiple billboards. For the same reason, any moving flashing or potentially distracting images are problematic. I understand that there are some restrictions on these, but we would be better off entirely without such additional features." And he says that "So long as the image, most will see, moving past them remains fixed, it is unlikely, that it is unlikely to change. There is potentially less problem for them, but advertisers want to attract the viewer's attention rather than allow it to remain focused on driving, biking, or walking." So that's Mike Lehman. I received an email from Anthony Sanfarelli at 713 South Grove, who opposes them. I didn't print it. It was a short email. And also, Mr. Trent Shepherd has emailed me, and he's in opposition to them as well. And then, I have an email from Rob and Arbiter. And Mary, did you want to read that one? Okay, I'm going to let the mayor read Rob and Arbiter's email.
This is from Rob and Arbiter. "I've been thinking about the issue of electronic billboards for the past several weeks and have gone back and forth a bit before landing on a position of opposition to the ushering in of electronic bulletin boards. On one hand, they are a legitimate form of advertising utilized in many cities. On the other, they create unique changes to the aesthetics, not just of billboards, but of the streets and cities where they are allowed. Their shifting messages and bright lights pose a heightened distraction to anyone in their presence, in the same way that televisions in waiting rooms and restaurants do, with the caveat that the driving, cycling, or walking viewer cannot turn them off or request that someone else do so. And they pose a change to a town or city's climate that is easier ushered in than removed later. What is this change, and why is it troubling? It is the change of 24/7 nonstop frenetic messaging of being surrounded by as much advertising as a media can saturate people with, in the context of an environment where people are already being bombarded with ads and electronic messages that beep, blink, and call for our attention unrelentingly. A friend flew into Willard Airport one recent evening. The outstanding feature on the landscape, as the plane landed, he noted, was the lighting at O'Brien's Auto Park. Is this the kind of feature that we want to define people's welcome into the county? Are electronic billboards in keeping with the tenor of life in Urbana? Or will they, by their very nature, define it in a way that residents will quickly regret? Bright lights, big city, sure, but bright lights with shifting messages and day-glow shininess, are these a good fit for a small city that has demonstrated previously an approach to living that includes trees, public art, and limited billboardings? If electronic billboards are welcomed into Urbana, we will be ramping up the level of intrusion into our public and private lives, not just of light and distraction, but of advertising itself. Is it worth asking what the impact of new, improved with 80% more lighting billboards will be on the average reasonable person's sense of ease as he or she moves around the city? Personally, I am wearied by the end of the day by the many ads that have come at me via email, Facebook, and snail mail, to say nothing of the three billboards I live not 20 yards from, and the many other billboards I have passed in the course of traveling by wheelchair and bus through the city. Billboard advertisers have the right to conduct their business, and I appreciate that. But at the same time, of the many ways the city of Urbana can shape the experience of moving through Urbana, the way of electronic billboards will not add anything beneficial to residents, even if they are viewed as customers or potential customers. The city has the right and obligation to pay attention to the aesthetic, design, and human impact of advertising, and to say no thanks to electronic billboards. Thanks for listening. Rob and Arbiter, 1511 Hunter Street, Urbana, Illinois."
Bill Brown?
Yeah, I received 24 emails. I don't think I'll read them all. I did, I did make a spreadsheet, and I kept track of them. And there were another eight that were posted to a Western Urbana neighborhood list that I didn't count, and that 24, so actually 32. Of the 24, all eight were opposed. Of the 24, nine were in favor, 10 were opposed, five were neutral. And I'll just summarize. One of the neutral ones says, "I believe the arguments on both sides to be a bit exaggerated."
Well, thank you. At least we're hearing from our constituents. Anybody else? Well, let's see. This is not debate. This is really just public input, so we're going to wait?
Okay, but this is just to tell you about emails I've got.
Okay, then, please go ahead.
So I didn't make a list of them, but I received quite a few. I don't think I received as many as you, but something like half a dozen emails. And I responded to them with just the position that I had mentioned before. And either three or four out of the six responded that that sounded reasonable. And Scott, I think, just replied, "Thank you," and then one other person didn't reply. So it's certainly true that the majority of the communications that I got were negative. In fact, they all were negative, but that a majority of those seemed agreeable to reasonable regulation.
Kane, well, thank you very much. Okay. With no other reports from emails or communications, I guess we'll close, at this time, the public input section. Thank you. Going on to the next item on the agenda, we're going to talk about ordinance number An ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-42, creating a Class T-4 license for wine tasting and packaged wine sales at market, special, and festival events. Okay, Natalie and Christine?
Hi. My name is Natalie Kenny Marquez. I'm the Director of Urbana's Market at the Square and the Marketing Coordinator for the City of Urbana, and I'm joined this evening by Cynthia Johnson of the Urbana Business Association. My purpose for being here this evening is to request for an amendment to Chapter 3, Section 3-41 of the Urbana City Code regarding temporary sale for alcoholic beverages. Market at the Square and the UBA are requesting a modification to allow for wine sales at farmers' markets and special events in Urbana. These venues include Urbana's Market at the Square, Holiday Market, Middle Market, the Urbana Sweet Corn Festival, and a proposed wine festival, which is proposed to take place in 2014 and will incorporate local wine, food, and art. The proposed event will be run and managed by the Urbana Business Association, with some assistance provided by the Illinois Grape Growers and Vintners Association. The proposed event location will be downtown Urbana, and will, like I said, incorporate local food, as well as artists and galleries from the Urbana area. The concept for a wine festival was inspired by other communities in Illinois, like Springfield, that host similar events, and UBA staff attended the Springfield event earlier this year and found it to be very successful. Market at the Square and the UBA would like to work with Illinois wineries to allow specifically for the sale of Illinois wine at farmers' markets, as well as special events in Urbana. Allowing Illinois wineries to participate in farmers' markets and special events will strengthen our local food economy and meet a demand by consumers. It will also help support the growth of local It will also help support the growth of local wineries and potentially provide a boost to the number of producer vendors that participate at Market at the Square, Holiday Market, and Middle Market. Like I mentioned before, the Section 3-41J of the Urbana City Code provides for the temporary sale of alcoholic beverages in the form of three different types of T licenses for special events held by a person who has an otherwise current license for civic or charitable organizations and for private promoters of outdoor events. However, these licenses don't address sales at farmers' markets by Illinois wineries as the vendor, nor does it address allowing Illinois wineries to participate in special events. As the language currently reads, each winery would be responsible for obtaining a T3 license, which would be cost prohibitive to these type of events and limit the number of dates per year that they could participate in a market or special event in Urbana. And between Urbana's Market at the Square, the Holiday Market, the Middle Market, there are farmers' market opportunities happening year-round here in Urbana. The proposed addition to the temporary liquor license language states that a holder of a State of Illinois liquor license may apply with the mayor's office for the proposed T4 license. And if issued, the T4 license will permit the holder to conduct wine tasting and/or sell packaged wine at a farmers' market or wine festival event conducted in Urbana. There will be a $50 fee to apply in addition to a $15 fee per day to participate at the farmers' market or wine festival. This application fee and daily participation fee is in addition to whatever fees are charged by the farmers' market or the wine festival. And the application and daily participation fees proposed for this T4 license are comparable to other Illinois municipalities. The proposed $50 application fee plus $15 daily fee is exactly the same as Oak Park, Illinois. Other communities charging similar fees include Carbondale, Countryside, Skokie, and Springfield. So, thank you for your time this evening. And Cynthia and I are available to answer any questions if you might have any.
Charlie?
I think this is a very good idea, I completely support it. I like the tie-in to the local aspect. But it made me think that we have a number of microbrews coming, you know, developing. I think we've got three in Champaign, Urbana, Savoy, and another one coming, at least. There's a new micro-distillery going up in Vermillion County, from what I, I think I read that in last week's paper sometime. How diffi, and this would be probably for legal here, how difficult would be, would it be to incorporate some provision for microbreweries, Illinois microbreweries, to have a similar thing to the wine tasting? And/or, you know, if the, you know, we have a, the distiller wants to come over and, I don't know if he'd be welcome with the wine festival or something, but, you know, something like that, to allow all of these microbreweries or wineries that have their, you know, their presence here in Illinois to be allowed?
I would recommend probably either a, yeah, a different Class T, if you were to go that route. The state statute, the primary difference is the quantity that can be served. I don't recall what a, what beer tasting quantity would be, but my recollection for, you know, other forms of spirits, distilled alcoholic beverages, is something like a quarter of an ounce. So, you'd have to have different regulations. Also, the interesting feature about the wine tasting is, in the state of Illinois, there is actually a special certification or license that tasting representatives can obtain from the Illinois Liquor Commission. I'm not aware, I haven't done the research either, so I can't give a definitive answer, but I'm not aware of similar certifications or licensing for beer representatives, beer tasting representatives, or distilled spirits tasting representatives. Illinois, given the very quick growth and promotional growth of the wine, vintning, if there is such a word, industry, has created this wine council on which, I believe it's the head of the Ag Department here at U of I and Southern and a few other people who are knowledgeable about wine, sit on this commission that's created by statute. And it's housed at Southern Illinois University as part of their Ag Department. The other two forms of alcoholic beverages, I, I did not, I didn't research it, but I also did not notice any similar council or similar rules. Though, they do provide for tasting within the statute. So, legally, yes. Structured exactly like this, we'd have to look at it. I don't see any, at this point, I don't see any prohibition, but I would suggest...
No, that's a very good, that's a very good answer, and so that, at least in my follow-up here to Cynthia and Natalie, is, you know, is there any, have you heard any interest from the microbreweries to do something like this?
I haven't heard interest directly, but I can tell you that the Springfield Wine Festival did have two microbreweries there. So, with the tasting tickets, you could either use it for a one-ounce wine or a one-ounce of the, the microbrews. So, it was something that they did offer there.
Okay, so, well, I would encourage us to pass this as it is and, and, or send it to council and then ask staff to research a little bit more to see how we might include local microbreweries in some kind of a separate T5. I guess that would be the next one coming along, so that we could, we could accommodate some of those folks, too.
It may be, you know, depending what the research shows, it may be possible to amend this T4 proposal instead of coming up with a T5. I just don't know the answer right now.
I would leave that to staff.
All right. I guess we'll go to the mayor because she's the liquor commissioner.
Yeah, I just wanna thank Natalie and Cynthia, because we've been talking about this for a few years now, and it got kinda lost in the shuffle with staff changes. So, I appreciate the research that you did. It's nice to know that we have the same fee as Oak Park. That was right, Oak Park, right. And, so, thank you very much.
And Diane?
Well, I agree with Charlie and the thoughts about the microbreweries. So, I would move ordinance number 2013-10-101 to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second. Okay, Eric Jacobson seconded, Diane Marlin made the motion. Other discussion? Okay, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, that'll go before city council. Yes, Charlie?
I'd like to just make a staff motion, asking for them to research the possibilities of adding these other classifications in some fashion at some point.
All right. Do you wanna make that a formal motion?
I just moved that, yeah.
Okay. Anybody wanna second that? Might as well follow the forum.
I'll second it.
All right. Discussion? Those indicating that they're approved, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that will be also added. Okay. All right. All right, we have one more ordinance before our discussion. Thank you very much, Cynthia and Natalie. Ordinance number 2013-10-102, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing the number of Class C liquor licenses for Lynn &amp; Leong DBA Beer Spirits LLC at 306 West Main Street. Do we have information on that?
This is an existing license, and they're going to sell the establishment. So, under our ordinance, we have to create a new license.
For the new owners?
For new owners, right.
Okay, all right. All right. Other discussion? Okay, Charlie Smythe?
I support this, too, but I also, you know, this is not the first time we've had an existing business, be it a bar or restaurant, in this case, a liquor store, change ownership. And it comes to council every time. We always rubber stamp it. I mean, because it's an existing business, we're not checking for locations and things like that. I'm just wondering if it's, if it'd be possible to just simply not have this kind of stuff come to coun, oh, Jim's already, why is it that all of these have to come to council regardless?
That's what the ordinance provides. With a change of ownership, there has to be a new application. This one was a little unusual, because an individual is the purchaser of the real estate and the existing business, two separate transactions. The purchaser of the real estate is one entity. The purchaser of the business assets and the operator, so to speak, of the store is another entity. So, we had to work those pieces together, so the application process wasn't complete. It took weeks to get it complete. But the ordinance provides, when there's a change of ownership, in significant part because different people will be managing the operation. And from, I guess, a policy standpoint, it forces them to understand what Urbana requires of a licensed holder.
Okay, Diane Marlin?
So, who is actually responsible, or who is actually receiving this license? The owner of the property or the operator of the store?
The operator of the store. The owner of the property is entering a lease. The person who actually purchased the two sets of assets is transferring the, if I get this right, the property, the real estate, to a corporate entity. The operating assets are going to be transferred to an LLC. Actually, I may have gotten that reversed. I think the LLC is gonna own the land and the Inc., corporate entity, is gonna operate the business. So, we had to make sure that, like any other license, where there's a separate landlord, even if they're owned by the same person, they enter into a lease with the operator and that the landlord gives permission to the operator to operate a business of this type. And that's what slowed this one down.
So, this license is to the LLC?
This license is, I don't wanna, I gotta remember the people, right?
That's what it says here.
Yeah, it says here, LLC, so they're the operator of the business.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? I guess we need a motion?
Move to send to council a recognition for approval?
Second.
Charlie Smythe, seconded by Eric Jacobson. Other discussion? All right. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that goes to council. All right. We're gonna have a discussion now about digital billboards. We have a couple people who wanted to approach and make comment during this period of time on the agenda. And, so I guess we'll just start with that, and then we'll just open up a general discussion. We'll have any kind of conversation we would like to have. Let's start with Clark Bullard. You wanted to come forward this time. Please indicate your name and where you live, and you have five minutes.
Yes, I'm Clark Bullard, live at 509 West Washington. And appreciate the diligence with which you folks approach all of these types of issues. So many little incremental changes, sometimes with many broader implications. I think outdoor advertising has come a long way in the last century, from painting the name of your firm on this side of your brick building to freestanding signs, and then mechanical signs that flip, and analog signs, and now digital signs. And it does look like a march toward Las Vegas. That's how they got where they are. So, it's, it's something I think we might be at kind of a fork in the road here. And it's kinda like the camel's nose under the tent. The, with the advent of many new media, like that letter that the mayor just read, there are many ways that we are being bombarded involuntarily with a lot of, a lot more advertising messages than we have in the past. And it's getting harder for an old person like me to tune out, learn how to tune out certain types of new advertising, when I've mastered now the ability to ignore stationary billboards. And there's always these new things on the internet and everything else, my phone. And, so, I think the, the evidence being offered, I mean, I hope you disregard this anecdotal data about, I don't know, how many weeks or months or years in Champaign counting traffic accidents. There's got to be more scientifically controlled studies around. And don't, please, look, look at the evidence and see if it's really, really sound. And for claims like, "We're going to let the police post amber alerts," and things like that, I mean, all over the country, cities, municipalities, the state police, they put up maybe digital billboards or something that tell you how long it's gonna take you to drive to the loop, and whether there's traffic jams or dangers, or amber alerts, or so many people killed this year in car accidents. When there's a public purpose to, to be served, to enhance public safety, or something like that, government can do that. We don't have to call the advertising agency and hope they can post the amber alert soon enough. So, I think, you know, we can separate out a lot of these issues. And finally, I ask that you, don't, we don't have to ape Champaign and everything Champaign does. We can create our own unique vision of Urbana's public space and Urbana's ambiance. We're trying to do that downtown in many ways. And I don't think just because Champaign does it, and they haven't had too much blood on the pavement since they did it, is a good reason for us to consider doing it at this point. And if you do think you need further study, please don't limit the study to the little details, Eric, of, you know, are there little incremental tweaks we can make to this proposal that'll make it acceptable? It might be time to ask the question, the broader question, of what, you know, what, what we really want our public space to look like in Urbana. And whether 10, 15 years from now, billboards are even part of it, or are they being, or are the billboards on their way to obsolescence? And there are other ways to limit signs and create a Santa Fe-like atmosphere or something else. But we don't have to just think about it in terms of tweaking this particular applicant's proposal. Let's try to think of the big picture and include these aesthetic considerations overall.
Questions for, for Clark?
Yeah. Thank you very much. Have you been to Santa Fe?
Yes. Two weeks ago.
Yeah, and Sedona, Arizona. People have written to me and said, you know, "Why can't we do what they do?" Well, they had their laws passed before the industry got the federal law passed. So, it's very refreshing to go someplace and see lack of all this clutter and just be able to enjoy the beauty of the scenery.
Well, that's why I suggest that maybe we think of a 10-year phase-out or something, or phased-down, or transition to something different.
We have legal constraints, so that's why we have the ordinance that we do. We can't just say, "Well, we're tired of billboards, we're not gonna have them anymore." Our only choice is, do we wanna change them? Do we wanna have more? But it's very hard to get fewer.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, there is two more people who would like to come forward. Chris Evans. Please indicate where you live and your name.
Chris Evans, Ward 4.
Do you have a, do you have an address?
I appreciate the chair enforcing the municipal code regarding that. It is the case that Article 1, Section 24, does require residents to provide an address. I, I wanna say that, in regards to that, that the city requiring citizens to oppose, I mean, to expose their address on a repeating television show is an unnecessary invasion of privacy, and I say that for five reasons. There is no residency requirement to do public participation. It could subject citizens to unwanted solicitors and junk mailers... It could subject citizens to unwanted solicitors and junk mailers. Police officers do not have to give their home address. And four, it jeopardizes personal safety in that it subjects citizens, residences, to possible burglars. And were I a female, it could expose me to sexual predators. And five, it could be construed as discriminatory against homeless people. So for those five reasons, I would be asked, I would ask that the code be changed and that I be allowed to speak now about digital billboards.
And any comment? Well, it's, yeah, we're not going to change the code at this moment, but this is public forum and I invite you to speak anyways.
Does there need to be a vote, Mayor?
We want, we want to hear from you, but if you want to vote, I think you have to give your address, but that's a separate thing. I know, I'm saying it's a separate thing.
That's all right.
So go ahead.
Chris, go ahead. We appreciate your com-
Okay, so I have permission to speak?
Yes, you do.
Okay, thank you. I, I don't have a, the commentary that you've heard from others is much better than I could ever add, very educational. And I didn't, really not opposed or against this sort of thing. I, I was kind of following up with Mr., what Mr. Jacobson had to say about can we, you, can, can we, can the advertisers, and of course Adams is beholden to their customers, but is there a way to, to include, the way these things operate, my understanding is 24/7, it's kind of a rotating thing? Could we include public service announcements, including maybe expanding the public arts mission where, you know, little animated shorts or decorative images could also be applied? I, I did see a, a good version of one of these in downtown Chicago where a shaped horizontal version of this was against a building with, you know, very beautiful graphics, but they were very decorative and very abstract. I, I think the arguments against, I've heard are, you know, worth looking into. For me, it begins and ends on safety and whether or not it's going to be a traffic problem. And so, you know, good luck. I wouldn't be comfortable legislating aesthetics, but it's, not to say it's not a worthwhile idea to do so, so good luck. But I was just throwing in the idea of could we maybe use it for civic announcements when meetings, elections, various things that you run on the, on the government channel, but also include maybe a public arts component to it where artists could submit. But again, Adams is, it's their, it's their billboard, it's their stuff, and it's, they've got customers, so it's just kind of a, you know, cooperative kind of effort. So anyway, thanks for listening to me.
Okay, are there questions? Eric.
So Chris, I'm sure you remember that Naomi and I have hanging on the wall one of your constructions. It's a cityscape that is sort of in relief, and there's a beautiful billboard represented on it. I'll invite you over and you can take another look at it to refresh your memory.
I, I hope I didn't say I was against billboards.
No, 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 no. I, I just couldn't help making the connection to see you here talking about that and, and looking at that every day.
On the, on this theme, let me just say this. I, I have to say, and I, and I, I like Steve Loves Pizzas and I think he's got a great business going, but who can deny that the alcohol advertising in the great hall of Lincoln Square has been, in my view, a disaster? But I don't know how you, like, come in and legislate about that, you know what I'm saying? So I, I can, I'm sympathetic to people's opposition to this visual clutter and maybe the issue goes to graphic designers that do this kind of advertising. I don't know. I mean, I'm sure Adams is not trying to make people upset. So it's, it's a tough call and a good luck to you.
Okay, thank you. We have one more individual who wanted to speak. Christina Nelson, or, if I got that right, Nelson? Okay. But I was guessing right. Okay. State your name and where you are, where you live, and you have ten-
Christina Nelson, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Christina Nelson, I live in University Downs. I actually agree with this fellow who just spoke about not giving, giving out an address. I think that's a good idea, actually. I decided to come and speak against these digital billboards because there are two things that bother me about them. And the others have touched on them a little bit. They further, number one point is that they further degrade our surroundings. They're visual pollution. We care about the quality of our water and our air. I care a lot about the quality of our visual environment. And these are especially insidious because they move. They're, it's, this is about eyeballs, attracting eyeballs to their sign, to their, to sell their product, whatever, whatever it is. And, you know, civic announcements, you know, that's, I don't buy that for a second. The whole point is attracting eyeballs, like advertising on TV, advertising on the internet, but you can turn off your TV or you can change the channels. You can turn off the internet. You can't turn off these, these digital, these digital signs. And because it's, it's about attracting eyeballs, it brings me to the second point, which other people have also mentioned, is that I think they're dangerous. Because they're meant to attract eyeballs to, to, to pull your eye off the, off the road, it, it may be only taking your eye off the road for one or two seconds, but isn't that enough time to hit a cyclist who's blown through a stop sign or hit a runner who doesn't pause at the curb, but just, you know, I have the right of way, so I'm going to charge across the, charge across the street? I, which brings me to the point of what is the, what do the police think about this? I mean, has anybody asked the police if they think they're, they're, these things are dangerous? I'd be interested to know if they approve of them, if they think that they're going to take people's, you know, anything that diverts attention, take their eyes off the road? I mean, somebody should ask them. But this, these signs, in my opinion, are just another way for big business to insinuate itself further into our surroundings. We're all becoming just little profit centers to these people, and this is just another, as the, the first speaker said, just another camel's nose under the tent. I, I dislike all billboards. They're just, they're all visual pollution to me. But they're, they're not well-designed, they're not attractive, they're, they, they take the cheapest way to attract the eyeball. It would be different if it were a really great graphic designer doing interesting things, but then it would take your eyes off the, the sign for even, or off the road for even longer. So I just think they're, they're just a bad idea all around. That's all I have to say.
Are there questions? Thank you, Christina. All right. So I guess we open up to a general discussion. Who would like to open the discussion? Diane Marlin.
I had a couple more questions for, for Adams Outdoor, if they could come back up to the microphone.
Okay, please do.
I haven't heard anything, well, in this chamber, anyway, from any businesses. Can you give us an idea of, is it, you know, multinational corporations advertising on these electronic billboards or is it local businesses? Or what, what makes a business choose a vinyl versus a digital advertising? And what kind of feedback do you get on that?
Ninety-five percent of our business is local businesses and-
Ninety-five percent of all business or your electronic business?
Of, of our entire, of all business, so that would transfer over to that. But people choose digital billboards because of their flexibility. You know, we have a digital network to where they can buy multiple digital units and be displayed through, all, you know, throughout champagne right now. Right now, we, we look at, you know, separation and distribution of our, of our digital assets, not to put them everywhere, you know, it would be cost prohibitive for us, and also too much inventory in one area, you can't sell at all. There's no production cost for digital billboards. You can have multiple advertisements in a day. Or we have some people that do, you know, a special for their, for, for the restaurant every, every single day and then, or you can even do a morning special and a dinner special. So just the, the great flexibility for, for the advertisers is what really is, is key to them.
And in champagne, on these community service announcements, because a couple of people did contact me about the fact that they have used the digital billboards in champagne for their organizations, like Safe Routes to School, for example, was running messages in champagne. Do you have an idea what percentage of the face time is spent on community service in champagne? Is that something they worked into their arrangement with you or?
We, we actually have a couple of people that deal in, in just public service in our office, so I can't speak to the exact numbers on that. But yeah, that would be something they would work together on them through, you know, they could have another, a static contract with us and then they would work that in to have additional space on billboards, on digital.
You mean, you have staff people who do nothing but public service?
Yes.
Do they help design the billboards as well?
They don't help design themselves, but we have an art director in-house that will come and meet, meet them and help with their design and try to get their message across as clearly as possible without cluttering the message, but doing, doing an effective message.
Okay, and I have one last question.
Go ahead.
The, the feedback I've gotten, I haven't been overwhelmed on either way, and it's been, it's been mixed, I would say. But the one thing that everybody agrees on, that people are bothered by, is that one billboard in downtown Urbana on Main Street at Vine, which is just kitty corner from, you know, the historic courthouse. And I know that's not one of the corners you're thinking of converting, but that would be one location, if we decided to move forward with this, that I would really, really be interested in seeing about removing that one entirely, just because it is just, seems to be like down there by itself and right down there in our historic heart. So that would, that, I guess that's not a question, but that would be something that I'd look at. But I really do like the idea of reducing the clutter of faces at Lincoln and University. I think that makes a huge improvement.
Okay, very good. Other discussion? Charlie Smythe.
I was going to mention that I, I think Safe Routes to School actually buys its time on the electronics. I got it, I actually am copied on Safe Routes to School stuff and I saw their, the proposed contract for next year.
They have, they have purchased some time. I'm not sure what they've always done in the past, but there is, as a matter of fact, I think it was just within the last week, they did contract for some space.
Yeah, and I think they paid for their space last year on those electronic billboards. They may have gotten some free billboards, static billboards as well, but I'm pretty sure they paid last year and, and the upcoming year.
Sure, I would speculate that if the digital billboard wasn't sold out at the time they were up, then they would have received added value while their message ran.
Okay, then, Eric Jacobson.
Do you have, do you have relationships with some cities where it's part of the agreement to permit the boards that a certain fraction is devoted to public service announcement? And if you do, can you, if, well, I'm just going to ask you, and I hope it's not proprietary, what fraction is that?
Yeah, I can answer that. In East Peoria, Illinois, on Route Eight, we have a digital billboard there. It's actually on city property. So in exchange for allowing a lease on their property, we allow them one-eighth of all of the space. So you can, we sell to eight advertisers on any digital billboard, and the messages are 10 seconds, so every 10 seconds, one digital static message changes to the next. So they are allowed one slot on that, on that billboard. So, you know, if it's sold out, then their, their message is running once every minute in 20 seconds. If there's only three advertisers sold on it at that point, or two other in them, then, then their message is up every 30 seconds.
So if I may ask a follow-on.
Go ahead, Eric.
So suppose you're, you're putting it, however, on, on private property? And, and so it's, it's not the city's property, but do you have a, a precedent for, or would you entertain as part of, you know, as something enforceable, either a contractual agreement with the city or as part of an ordinance, that a certain fraction of time, a certain amount of time, on each digital billboard would be given over to public service?
We don't have any agreements like that at this point, but what I'll tell you is, in exchange for, for your consideration, we're certainly open to, you know, viewing any opportunity.
All right. Any other topics that people want to address at this moment, I could, or have Adams Outdoor? We, we, well, we could just thank them very much and we can go back to our own discussion? Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion on outdoor billboards at this time, digital billboards? Bill Brown.
Yeah. I did actually solicit some of this email I got. Had an email list of a lot of people from the east side of my ward that I don't really hear a lot from, so I asked them what they thought. Digital billboards are kind of the farthest from their mind, actually. They want us to address blight, they want us to provide light on their streets. I think one woman would have liked a digital billboard in her front yard, actually, to get some more light on your streets.
Let them put up billboards to save on street lights.
Pretty much. One of them actually worked for champagne police. She said they do use them for safety messages. She was in favor. Several people mentioned that the clutter at Lincoln and, and University, they would like to see that reduced by, from instead of six, six to two or, yeah, six to two. So just kind of to follow up on why I got so much email, I kind of asked for it. As far as what I feel about it, I think they've come a long way. I think they're a lot better now than they used to be. I still think that 10 seconds is probably a little too fast. I know you probably have to do that in order to get everybody to see two ads or something as you're coming up to the intersection and then you can sell, that's what makes it cost effective. So maybe as, as prices come down, they'd be more cost-effective if we could ask for 20 seconds, I don't know. I think other than that, I think the resolution makes a big difference. I think champagne specifies 20-millimeter minimum resolution. You guys have some 16s, I think, and 12s are coming out. So, you know, as, as things improve, I think they'll get better. I, I'm not sure it's quite there yet. I, I think, personally, I'd, I'd like to look at this in, say, six months and, and ask that you try to figure out a way to enforce that white background rule more, or else maybe our staff, or if our staff isn't going to look at it, then the council members will have to look at it to see what kind of ordinance we could produce that would actually codify that average value in the image. I don't think it's a matter of dimness. I know you have your automatic dimmers, it's supposed to dim them at night, but that would just kind of turn it gray. It wouldn't really solve the problem of the white background. So that's kind of where I am with this. I'm not opposed to electronic billboards. I understand the aesthetic argument. I, I don't know if Lincoln and University is that far from champagne. I think a lot of people that go through Lincoln and University probably think they're in champagne anyway, so I don't know the contrast of whether you're in champagne or Urbana and how much more pastoral Urbana is. I'm not sure if that rings true all the time. I do think the non-conforming one downtown on Vine and Main would be nice to get rid of that one, if we could. I know there's a couple of non-conforming ones on Philo Road, and the people that wrote to me about those weren't overly concerned about those. Those aren't lit at night. I think they'd like form to be lit at night, maybe. No, maybe not, I don't know, I didn't ask about that. But they did say that when those change, even physical billboards do change, the poster types, they tear off the paper and they look kind of bad for a while and there's some litter and stuff. So even whether it's digital changing or physical ones changing, there's a transition period that bothers people. So I think that's about all I have to say right now.
All right. Actually, I'd like to make a comment. So Bill, would you take over the chairmanship so I could raise my hand?
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. Roberts.
Okay, thank you.
I had a, I can appreciate that-
I had a, I can appreciate that the technology of our era is leaping into the digital age. And I think that there's a lot of applications for digital technology that people enjoy very much. We all, I don't personally, but many people have smartphones. We're all on the internet more times than we would have imagined we would have been, you know, seven years ago. I see people at the restaurant, apparently they're on a date, but neither of them are looking at each other because they're answering their phones and texting messages to third parties somewhere else. I know that when I go into the bank to deposit money in my account, I do not know why I have to watch a digital display above the teller showing me what the temperature is in Tampa, Florida today. It just makes no sense. So I think that sometimes digitalization is really useful and we want to use it. And at other times, it's really an annoyance and we can't figure out why we're showing, being shown this. Now, digital displays have been in, you know, you can find them in the New York Underground. You can find them, you know, you're pretty much aimed, that one is aimed at you when you're sitting in your seat on the airplane. And sometimes you want it and sometimes you don't. When we don't have an option of turning it off to protect our personal space, I think it becomes a public issue. And that's probably why we're having a discussion right now. There are times, then, that I don't think that it's appropriate. And I think that, you know, people who I've talked to have, who aren't so much in favor of this technology, say, "Well, you know, I don't like billboards much, but a digital billboard, you know, I can't avoid but to glance at it." I think that's why they're being promoted, because they're very successful media in this term. And I know, but they say that, you know, why, I don't have a way of turning it off. You know, and so it becomes like a monitor on a stick on the highway. I think that we've spent a lot of money, actually millions of dollars, over the years. I'm trying to improve our highways and beautifying them. One of the quarters that we, one of the corridors that we've made very little progress on, well, there's two of them. One is Lincoln Avenue and one is Cunningham Avenue. Cunningham Avenue is in my ward. We've had a beautification plan drawn up about five years ago. Maybe it wasn't the most brilliant plan, but it did accord us with ways of beautifying the street. You know, and we're spending lots of money on changing curb cuts, you know, talking about planting vegetation. And then, you know, we have suddenly, you know, you do all that kind of work and then, all right, how does the digital billboard display showing you what the current rate for a pizza is fit into that picture? So it's really a choice of, you know, where do we want to receive commercial information? Now, I receive the Sunday News, you know, and I like to read the Sunday paper. And every Sunday I get, you know, about two pounds of advertising. And I know that many people like to look through those for the coupons. But for me, I'm not really, I'm not motivated, you know, to be a coupon snapper. You know, and I look maybe at two things that might have my interest. But like 98% of it has no application to my life. But I think about how many trees are used and how much paint and ink is used to produce that on a regular basis every day. Now, I'm happy that many people are employed because of the advertising industry. But again, it's just another way that we receive communication about advertising and sales that, you know, I think is like kind of redundant. But I don't mind it because I can choose to look through it or I can put it in the recycling bin. I can't put the digital display in the recycling bin. It's beyond my ability to do that. Now, I don't, I like art and having the billboard display art is nice. But I'm satisfied, you know, with static displays that last for a month. I'd like to see that art up there a long time on the billboard, if it's going to be. And I think flashing it at you for 10 seconds is really not serving art. You can hardly even comprehend what the image is. So these are just some of the things that I personally have thought about in this discussion. Now, I went to the farmer's market and I stopped rather a lot of people, actually, and asked them about this topic. And I didn't really find one person who was very excited about it. And I found several people who thought that, well, they might, you know, email their city council members objecting to it. And it may be that, it might be that Urbana just thinks about things slightly differently than Champaign. I don't know. It's just a thought that I have. I guess that, for me, I really do think about the things that detract from life that aren't necessary. And I just, you know, as much as I think it's probably important to know what the sales are at some local store, I just don't think I need to see it, you know, against the sky. You know, I guess if you took this to a logical conclusion, if you ever saw the movie Blade Runner that came out in the 70s, it shows an environment in which digitalization and commercialization is, becomes not the norm, but the structure of culture. If you saw Minority Report, it wasn't very long, it won't be very long, well, actually, it's happening now. When you walk, when you open up your email, they know so much about your search engine activity that they can, they can customize the ads that you see on your screen. And you have to like, you know, get a program out to stop pop-up ads. So I think that one thing leads to another. And I think that, you know, this seems like a really small request by Adams Outdoor. And I totally respect the fact that Adams Outdoor is an up-and-standing advertising company and I think their static signs are fine. And I don't really even have a real objection to the ones that are here and there. The other people say, "Boy, they should like to get rid of those." Maybe because they don't intrude on my eyescape. Or, you know, in urban planning, there's something called the gaze, the gaze of the individual. This is a study now in urban planning. And they talk about the urban gaze and the tourist gaze. And this is, like, this is a whole field of study about what captures the eye, what, and is it a beautiful image? Does it enhance? Or is it detract? Is it, you know, like a slum situation? Is it a deterioration? So I think that we're at kind of an interesting pivotal point here where we're about to make a change, potentially, in a very significant landscape decision about our environment. And I think that we have to make this in a very careful way. And I don't think that it's necessarily going to serve the people of the community to serve a single advertising company and make them happy when maybe we're going to find out after some of these things are erected that we didn't really wish to have them. But, you know, I think once we put some up, I don't think that we're going to be legally in a position to take them away. So this is a turning point. And I think that people really need to think about this. And I think that there's more at stake than the price of chicken at the local market. Thank you. And I'll take the back of the chair if you'd allow me to. Okay. The mayor.
The reason that we have a sign ordinance is that the city has been concerned about the beauty of our surroundings. And we recognize that people have the right to advertise. There's no problem with that. But I have been in places that don't have billboards. And I've been in places like a highway in Florida, in Tampa, where there were so many billboards that you couldn't see anything. It was just one thing after another. And if we were unable to communicate with people, that would be one thing. But I think people are just oversaturated with all kinds of advertising messages. And I understand Adams as a business. I can't believe that you would want to have fewer billboards and make less money. So if an image can change every 10 seconds, you could get six different ads on one face of an electronic billboard in one minute. And that's equivalent to having six billboards. So I think you're going to get more advertising, not less, and it's being sold as somehow reducing the clutter. I think it's going to add to the clutter. And I think that Urbana is better off trying to reduce that visual clutter and giving people this as of what we've tried to create in this city with trees and public art.
Okay, Diane?
Well, I've been giving this a great deal of thought since we were first approached, actually, this spring. And actually started noticing billboards, which I hadn't. I guess I had sort of gotten used to the vinyl billboards that were around our city. Couple of things that I am reminding myself and I'd like to remind others of is, one is, as much as people might like us to go to the Santa Fe model, the billboards in this town are not going to go away. We've had over a decade of litigation settling that point. There won't be many more new locations, but there certainly won't be any fewer unless we change formats. And that's why I see going from vinyl to digital gives us that opportunity. We saw the visual at Lincoln Avenue to get rid of this, to reduce from six faces down to basically one digital face to start with, I think, does reduce the visual clutter at a gateway entrance to the city. And that, that's, that impresses me. The other thing is that the billboards are not there just for the sake of being there. They're there because businesses in our community utilize them. And from what I understand, Urbana businesses are advertising on the digital billboards in Champaign, trying to get their message out, but they're not getting their message across in Urbana on these billboards. And we're looking at three locations, one at Lincoln and University, another one on University, and then the third on North Cunningham. And these are not residential areas. These are business areas. These are major thoroughfares. I sat at the corner, I stood at the corner of Lincoln and University Day. I went to the corner of Vine and Main. I was at University and Broadway. Each of the locations that were proposed for these billboards. And, you know, tried to imagine what it would look like as a digital versus what we have there now. And if you're talking about saving resources, every time you put up a vinyl billboard, you're putting up plastic and you're tearing it off and you're replacing it with new plastic. And how often does that happen? I guess it's once a month, but there's a lot of resources that go into that. So I am not opposed to digital billboards. I do think if we proceed, we need to have some controls in place. I want to see a reduction in the overall number of faces and we'll see that. I want at least a minimum of 10 seconds between the image change. They have to be solid changes, none of these PowerPoint-type fancy things. We should think about design standards if we're going to, especially with regard to the glare from light backgrounds. Absolutely no animated images, the use of community service messages. And then we should think about the landscaping and the appearance around the signs. And I really, really would like to think about how we can just remove that one from downtown across from our beautiful historic bell tower and courthouse. But anyway, I'm not, I'm not opposed to these and I would, I would support moving forward on this.
We had Eric and then Carol.
So I'm aware of the ugly history of litigation around this with the city of Urbana. And in which, I might note, Urbana lost, I believe, every time. So, not true? Okay. Okay. But anyway, it, we don't want to go there, if we could avoid it. So I'd like to have us ask Mr. Simon if he would do, you know, updated legal research on, and maybe guide us into what sort of regulations or agreements are, you know, are enforceable and so that we stay in, should we decide to go ahead on this, that we stay in territory where we're comfortable with what we can control.
A quick review, though not exhaustive, of Illinois case law and case law within the federal district in which Illinois is located, including the US Supreme Court litigation, finds very little change in the law. And our ordinance is very compliant. Our current ordinance is very compliant with the law. Obviously, a lot of this is a policy question for you all to look at. And obviously, staff, whoever, can do all kinds of research throughout the country to see what everyone else has done. But I, you know, it will take, to do that, it'll take a lot of work. So if there's a consensus within the council, that's what the council wants staff to do, then staff will, you know, gladly do it. But if there's not a consensus in the council for that, it would be an undertaking that, you know, we're looking at policy and how others have addressed the policy. And also, when you get outside of the Seventh Circuit, Illinois, Wisconsin, Indiana, you get into, well, what other circuits have rendered decisions that are not applicable here.
Yes, I guess all that I'm, I mean, easy for me to say, but all that I'm really asking is, if we suggest to you that we want to go in a particular direction, can you, can you tell us how far we can go or guide us to keep us out of trouble in going in that direction?
Yes, yes. If you give me direction where you want to go, then I'll know where you want to go and I'll see what the law says about that.
Thank you. All right, Carol Ammons.
I think that was going to my question because actually, not necessarily, this is a zoning requirement. So we would literally have to change the zoning ordinance to make this happen. And if we've done the research on that portion of it, with the requirement on.
The zoning ordinance is very clear in terms of the process which must be used. Council can make recommendations, but it has to start with CD and the zoning administrator, Libby Tyler, and proceed to the process. I think Rebecca's better versed in that, though she and I discussed that. There is a very specific process that has to be followed in terms of where this goes. But ultimately, the buck stops here at the council.
Charlie Smythe.
Yeah, I continue to be concerned most of all about the safety of these. And I think that's completely out of, the jury is completely out, I think, as Clark put it earlier. There are questions about the industry-provided surveys or studies. The independent surveys show that there are still some issues out there. I think the jury, like as Clark said, there's just not enough evidence, one way or the other, to know whether these things are safe and what kind of restrictions need to be put on to keep them safe. At the same time, I see the potential, even in a two-for-one type situation, of ending up with 40 digital billboards in Urbana. If we have 80 faces now, we could end up with 40 if you do a two-for-one. That would, you know, if you have six ads per minute, that's a lot of advertising out there, flashing up there on all those potential billboards. Of course, everybody says, "Oh, it's too expensive right now." But, you know, as with digital televisions that were, you know, thousands and thousands of dollars 10 years ago, now you can get them for a couple hundred today, you know. So the technology will bring that cost down. So, you know, that's a, that's a huge worry for me. My ward, no one has supported it. All of the people, you know, you've been copied on almost all of the emails that were sent by people in my ward. It's just, I've got to, I've talked to a number of people, dozens of people have spoken against them. I can't, I can't support electronic billboards in any way. That would run totally counter to my constituents. So unless there are four council members and a mayor willing to do something, we need to table this to the next council. And I don't mean the next council meeting. I mean the next council that takes over for us. Because the way I'm, the way I see things, assuming the mayor vetoes this, there need be five of you that would support a change. And so I think the best thing to do right now is I'm going to make a motion to table this indefinitely.
Bill, would you take the chair again?
Great. Is there a second?
Yes, I'd like to second it.
Do you want the chair back?
Yes, thank you.
I'm not sure it's a debatable, is it a debatable motion?
But I'm thinking it's not.
Is, is that a debatable motion, Mr. Simon?
That one I'd have to look up, but I don't think it is. I, I think our clerk, you know, the consensus is...
It's tabled indefinitely.
Yeah.
Do we get to vote on that?
Yeah, you have to vote on it, yes.
All right. Let's vote.
All right. So, debate? I guess there's no debate on that. There's no debate on it. All right. Those in favor?
Table it indefinitely.
Motion fails.
Yeah, motion failed. All right.
We have to adjourn?
Yes, I think that perhaps we've actually had the fruit of the discussion, so I...
Diane.
Well, I'm, I'm willing to move to direct the zoning administrator to initiate a zoning case and text amendment related to outdoor digital advertising.
Second.
Yes. Mayor.
I think we should be looking at our goals. We do not have unlimited resources in the staff people that we have, and to keep loading them up with more and more things, I, I don't think is right. And I think we should be setting priorities. And I think this should be discussed in the context of all the other things that we have to do and the resources that are available to the city.
Okay. Diane Marlin.
Well, that would go for every single thing we do, then. This is new. There are many new items coming before us all the time. So how do we, how do we put off one out of respect for staff time and not another? Just curious what, what that is.
Thank you. Charlie.
Right now, we have, we've got a staff of two out of four in the group that would handle this. They're going to have trouble just keeping up with even day-to-day business related to zoning and planning. And, and like I said, unless there are four council members and a mayor willing to support this, it's just not worth having our staff spend time on this issue going forward. And that's why I suggested, there's enough information out there. Unless there are five council members who have a, or are committed to doing something, then those five councilors need to step forward and, and make that known. But if there aren't, we should not waste staff time.
Carol.
Well, I am sent out and talked to a few people as well about the digital billboards. And most people are either lukewarm or in my district really don't care too much about whether it's digital or flat. In this case, I couldn't support the table indefinitely because it doesn't give the opportunity, even if it takes six months down the road, for some other factors to be brought forward. I'm not convinced that we have to have digital billboards. As a matter of fact, as I travel and see the number of boards up and down 57, I'm often irritated by it. I certainly wouldn't want to turn the city that I like to come back to into that, which is why, you know, I come back anyway. But I don't think it's in the best interest to limit indefinitely the possibility of further discussion or research, which is why I couldn't support an indefinite tabling to another council. I think that the research could be put for a timeframe that can extend based on our staff's ability to address it, but not necessarily indefinitely, never, ever until there's another council. Yeah, I just couldn't see that.
Okay, I'm thinking that this, this conversation is winding down. One more comment and we're going to be adjourned.
There's a motion on the table. I wanted to ask you to repeat the motion and, and if there was a timeframe attached to that motion.
There was not, but you could add one.
Would you consider, like, just changing your motion to add a, say, April 30th timeframe?
Is that six months?
No, is it? To, I mean, this was just to, for the staff to do the research, to, to do a zoning ordinance? Is that what it was?
Initiate the case.
Does that seem like a reasonable...
All right. So, okay, let's, let's have a conversation with the hands, I guess. Okay, Charlie?
Well, the, the whole point is, you're not hearing me. Unless there are five council members who will vote for a zoning ordinance change, it's not worth even going into the process, the zoning process. And, you know, if there are five council members who raise their hand that said they will do a digital electronics billboards of some kind, please raise your hands and then things can move forward. If there aren't five council members, it's not worth spending staff time to put a zoning forward, zoning amendment out there just to come back to here and have it vetoed and that over, and that veto not overridden. We'd be wasting staff time and all the public time that goes into this. It'd be much better to push this off right where we are and look at it again in 18 months and see if the research has changed on the safety issue. See if there's less opposition from our constituents. See if there are five council members or four council members and a mayor who support it.
Well, we're still waiting to address a motion, and if there needs to be a motion to do something else, then that should be made. Eric Jacobson.
Yeah, I'm going to speak in favor of the motion, and I understand that we're short-staffed. And I understand that therefore it may take longer to pursue this. But I think that there's, I don't see a reason not to consider it further. There may or may not, at the end of the day, be five council members who will, who will support this. But I don't think we need to have people commit right now to voting for something or not that doesn't yet exist. That's, that's like putting us into a ridiculous sort of straitjacket. So I, I do believe that, that we should move forward with, we should ask the staff to do appropriate research so that we have the discussion in whatever time is appropriate. I would, I would say even that it could be, I would say even that this could be moved to perhaps even a couple of months later than, than was mentioned. I think it could be next summer. And, but, but I do believe that we shouldn't just stop it dead at, right now.
Okay, so now we have got a motion and it's been seconded in some strange way, but it hasn't been modified, so we're going back to the original motion, which you said is what the date is?
There was no date attached, which means it could, it'd be within the staff's ability to do it. And if it takes nine months to do, then that's what it is because we are short-staffed. So I, I'm not, haven't had that much experience with this type of case, so I really don't know what the appropriate timeline is. But given the fact that we're down two staff members, we have to be realistic. But it's a question of either moving forward or not, so that's, that's where we are.
Okay, that's a good honest comment. Okay, Carol.
I just wanted to clarify something Charlie just said, which I'm taking into consideration. If you sent it to staff to look at for nine months from now and they bring it back without, of course, the four council members and the mayor to vote, and the mayor has the veto power on this particular issue, is that what I'm understanding you're saying? So even if you had four members, the mayor could still veto it?
Well, we're...
So that's, okay, we're sorting it out. So are we ready to make a, make a vote? Okay, I guess we'll, all those in, okay?
Well, I should point out that the, the, in the motion, it sends it to the Plan Commission. It doesn't come back to us.
It doesn't send anywhere, I don't think.
It doesn't, okay.
It, there's no, there's no direction about where this goes other than you want staff to, to explore it.
Well, according to the procedure that was explained to me, the zoning case gets initiated, the text amendment is written, it then goes to the Plan Commission.
Right, yeah, it goes to the full, we're going to put a lot of people to a lot of work to do this. And that's why I'm saying that it's important that there are commitments to doing something if we're going to go through all that work. That's why I will oppose this.
All right, so I, without further discussion, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay, three. It's defeated.
Okay. This, this council is adjourned. This committee is adjourned.